The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
I'll call the regular meeting of Plainville Town Council to order. Tonight is Monday, December 6, 2021, 7:00 PM. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask Councilperson Tompkins to please lead us.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. We do have a special presentation tonight, which I'm looking forward to. We have a plaque of appreciation presentation to Cuzio Construction Company. And I believe our own Dominic Machini is going to help us through that. So Dominic, would you come up to the microphone and introduce your special guest? Turn it on. Push the button, turn it on, please. Perfect, thank you.
Rip Cuzio, he's been snowplowing for the town of Plainville for 42 years.
Wow.
I want to recognize him tonight and thank him for his service. He's been a real asset to me. He's one of those contractors where I just send him out and I don't hear from him. And he comes back at the end of the night and his section is all set and not a problem. So I just want to thank Rip. On behalf of the town of Plainville and the council, we'd like to thank you for your service. And hopefully you'll continue for another 20 years. At least. Thank you. I like to thank you. And with that, on low, Rip, say a couple.
Would you like to say anything?
Thank you very much. I really never, never thought something like this could ever happen. I just did my job and everything was wonderful. And Dominic is like the best foreman that I ever had on this type of work. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Did you pay him that? No, you didn't pay him to say that, Dominic.
I don't have to.
Well, of course. Well, we appreciate, you know, that's such hard work and the town truly appreciates all the effort, energy of all the contractors that come out and help us get through those major, those snowstorms because without folks like you, we would be stuck. And I know that Dominic makes sure that he has the right people doing the job all the time.
Exactly.
But for doing it as that long a period, you are truly remarkable. And thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you, Dominic. Okay, thanks.
Is there a particular area of town that?
I don't know if I should say that. The citizens probably don't like him.
Put him on the spot here.
But actually, Rip is in, over in MacArthur. And then that section by Hamlin's Pond.
Okay.
Over to Tomlinson Avenue. And he's been doing that section for a real long time. He started out years ago with Abchar, I think.
Yeah, I did Reliance Row area.
When he was like 18.
And everything off of Cook Street, all the way to the Farmington line.
Wow.
He's been doing a lot of areas around town.
Definitely.
I stuck him in this flat area now because he needs to get a coffee and juice. I thank you for recognizing him tonight, too.
And thank you for, for bringing him to us. We appreciate that. Thanks both to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good rest of the night.
Good night, folks. We'll see you.
Good night, thank you.
And leave season will be ending tomorrow. Just to let you know because we've got a little snow coming in on Wednesday. So we're going to do a final round tomorrow for leaves. And then that's it.
All done, okay.
All right, folks, have a good night.
Thank you. All right, thanks again. Okay, we do not have a public hearing scheduled, so I will ask for approval of the minutes of the November 15, 2021, special and regular meeting.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, November 15, 2021, special and regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Announcements and reports? Do we have any announcements or reports tonight? Okay. Moving along. I have some special items to take care of tonight, appointments and resignations.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Jesse Nassau from the town council.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? I'd like to ask, we send a letter of thanks and appreciation to Mr. Nassau for his years of service on the town council. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number two.
Madam Chair. Motion to appoint Rosemary Moranti to the town council.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Welcome back. Mr. Lee.
Just wanted to say that that's as recommended by the Democratic Town Committee.
Democratic Town Committee, okay.
Although I didn't, I didn't see the, the official letter, but it's my understanding that they did, that they did take that action.
Okay. All right, any other comments? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Rosemary. We have a seat for you.
Does she have to get sworn in by Cindy tonight?
Okay. Oh, sorry. Swearing in, yep. Welcome back, Rosemary. Okay. Do we have any other appointments or reappointments to boards and commissions tonight? Okay. Board of Ed is not till the third Monday. And we are now at the report of the town manager, Mr. Lee.
Thank you very much. I have several items to speak of, which is, the first one is the introduction of the new health director, Health District Director Susan Lonzac. I would like to introduce Susan Lonzac as the new Director of Health for the Plainville Southington Regional Health District. Mrs. Lonzac began her duties two weeks ago. She replaced Shane Lockwood, who took a position in Florida after working for the district since its inception approximately nine years ago. Susan came to our region from Chesapeake, yes, that's spelt correctly. Chesapeake is Cheshire, Prospect, and Woolkit. That's how they came up with that name. From the Chesapeake Health District, where she worked for six years as the Acting Director of Health and the Chief Sanitarian. She previously worked for the State Health Department, the Trumbull Monroe Health District, and the City of West Haven Health Department. She has a Bachelor of Science degree in public health from Southern Connecticut State University, as well as a Master of Public Health degree from the same university. She was chosen to be the Health Director by the Regional Board members of the district after an extensive search and being one of five final candidates that were interviewed. As a member of the Board of Directors myself, we were very impressed with her background, her enthusiasm, and her personality. She was clearly the top candidate for the position, and the Health District is very fortunate to have her working for the betterment of the citizens of Plainville, Southington, and Middlefield. I've asked Mrs. Lonzac to give a brief COVID-19 update and to answer questions the town council may have regarding her new position as the Health Director for the Plainville Southington Health District, so.
Great.
Susan, if you don't mind using that mic that's lit up.
Hi, welcome. Thank you for having me. I am honestly so excited to be a part of this team. It's two weeks in and it's been a busy, crazy one, but it's been wonderful. So I just want to thank you all for taking a few minutes. And thank you for the nice little introduction that gives you my background, so I don't have to share too much. So, you know, I did want to give a brief little COVID update, but I'll, I'll pre-warn you in saying that while I'm getting into the mix, still getting access into some of our state databases, that will give me a really good idea of what exactly is going on in Plainville. So it will be brief tonight, but I hope that in, you know, in the coming days, I'm going to have access to things like our vaccination rates of our children, items of real specificity regarding our COVID cases and the ages and whether people are vaccinated or not. So all of that is in the works. All of that is really important information so that I can help support the town and the towns in general. But so tonight, I just wanted to talk a little bit. Obviously, we all know the state is currently experiencing increases in cases. You know, whenever we have holidays, that always does create an additional kind of spike. You know, we were already kind of gearing up, and this last week has shown the increases in cases were definitely from social gatherings. I've been working really closely with our three school districts and just based on some of the contact tracing information and conversations, it's pretty evident that, you know, our case increases are mostly from social gatherings and outside of school activities. So, you know, it's, we can definitely kind of pinpoint some of those things, which is important to do. I think our school, just school system here has been doing excellent with mitigation strategies. I've talked in depth with the nursing supervisor and individuals that are supporting that. And, and I've been really impressed with how they've been working through scenarios. And I'll continue on a daily basis and whenever they need to offer assistance. You know, I, for the last two years, have been ingrained in COVID work for my other district, running vaccine clinics, doing all the contact tracing, really being involved in understanding the community and their needs. And so for me, this is a really exciting time because I get to learn three new communities, even though it's difficult because we're still in the midst of a pandemic. I think it's, there is, it's a little bit different, you know, knowing that we have vaccines so readily available with the ability to provide booster shots, you know, so readily available, and the fact that our children are now able to get vaccinated in the 5 to 11 age range. So I think there's, as much as the numbers may seem a little intimidating, and yes, Plainville is in the red, we have consistently had a little bit of an increase every week in cases. I think that there is a silver lining to it because, you know, we're not experiencing high volumes of deaths in the state. We're not experiencing high volumes of severe cases. We are seeing the benefits of the vaccine. But, you know, one of the important things is to continue to reiterate the importance of that. So, you know, my goal, even though I've only been here for two weeks, my goal is to try to get myself involved in the communities as much as possible. And I anticipate in the coming days, reaching out to our senior center here and seeing if there's an interest in partnering with Hartford Healthcare to offer a booster clinic. You know, I really want to try to provide access to your community and figure out the needs, you know. Once we're, you know, past COVID and we kind of get back to a little bit of normalcy, I really hope to be able to embed myself in the community and provide different services, different education, and just really become a part of it. So, you know, I'm, I'm happy to provide data, but I also think that I'd like to provide a report, probably at the end of the week, to, to all of my town mayor selectmen and, and have real specific information. So I apologize that I didn't have kind of age breakdowns and things like that tonight, but I will. All my access is, is up at the state, just waiting to come down, so. But, so, so thank you for the welcome and just the chance to say hello. Now you have a face with the name. And I look forward to, you know, always leaving my door open, being a part of the community. I won't just stay in Southington. I will pop into Plainville. I will try to be as involved as possible, so I thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to meet you. We used to get interesting reports from Shane. I'm sure the same will continue with you as well. Of course, everybody wants COVID to no longer be a word we have to use on a daily basis, however. We have to get through it in the best way possible, and we certainly appreciate your guidance going forward as to what you recommend we should be doing. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, all of you, too.
Yes, Robert.
I found out something interesting today, and I don't know, Susan, if you can speak to it a little bit. You know, people who have had COVID have expressed the fact that, some have, I'm not saying everyone, obviously, that, that that provides them with immunity from getting COVID. And, and I heard today that there have been some people who have had COVID in the past that have, you know, gotten COVID again, and that's one of the reasons why people are somewhat concerned. Some people are somewhat concerned about the vaccines that say, well, the vaccines, you know, you get the vaccine, but that doesn't mean you won't get COVID because you get COVID as well. Could you, you know, could you speak a little bit to that?
Sure.
In terms of, because I found it surprising today that, well, maybe not so surprising, but it's the first time I heard it, that people who've had COVID once before are getting COVID again.
Yes, well, you know, as this is evolving, we're definitely seeing different variants that are coming out. And, you know, even if you do have COVID or get a vaccine, it doesn't mean that you're completely immune to it, you know, that you, you don't have the risk of getting it. You know, the one thing that I like to reiterate, I think when vaccines first came out, everyone thought that, oh, this is the answer. We're going to get a vaccine, we'll never get COVID, that's it. And, you know, as time has gone on, it's shown that, you know, it's, it's pretty common that, you know, you're still susceptible to getting COVID. You're much less likely to get COVID if you have a vaccine. But when you do, your symptoms are going to be much less. So, you know, the, the kind of, you may get COVID twice, you know, you may get a different variant, you may get COVID while you have gotten a booster vaccine. But the goal with the vaccine really is about minimizing deaths and minimizing severe cases. And, and I really do think that the longer that we go through this, the more, hopefully the more answers we'll have. You know, the more understanding we'll get behind some of the questions that we all have. But I will tell you that, you know, although I haven't partaken in contact tracing for this district, I did do it in Chesapeake. And, you know, so I was able to firsthand interview individuals that, you know, had the vaccine or thought they had already had COVID. So I was kind of able to ask questions and get a better understanding. And typically, individuals that had the vaccine really had much more mild symptoms, too, which was, was a wonderful thing to hear. So I think it's, it's all to be continued. And, you know, all to be, more information will be coming out, hopefully, that will provide a little more information for us, so. Sure.
Great, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions before we go on? Thank you again for coming this evening.
Thank you for having me.
Okay. Robert?
The next item I have is the Self Insurance Health Fund update. In April, town staff presented to the town council a plan to eliminate the deficit in the self insurance health fund. The deficit at that time was $2.37 million, and the plan was to utilize budget savings and the health insurance line items of both the town and the Board of Education, as well as monies available in the debt management fund over a three-year period to eliminate the deficit. Due to more favorable budget results, it is now anticipated that there will be less needed to tap the debt management fund. Based on that information from the finance director, there is, there were additional savings in both fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '22 operating budgets of approximately $582,000. It was originally anticipated the deficit in the self insurance fund at the end of this fiscal year would be 1.307, about a little bit over a million dollars. It is now anticipated the deficit will almost be about half that amount. As a result, there will be savings of approximately $582,000 that will not be needed from the debt management fund to eliminate this deficit. And I think that's good news, and I wanted to bring that to the town council's attention. These operating budgets wasn't the, these were the line item savings in the health line items of each, of both the Board of Education and the, and the general government budget. Most of it came from the Board of Education. They have more employees.
Correct.
The state health plan, the state health partnership plan that we joined several years ago, as we set the budget for those line items, they came in lower than what was anticipated, and we took those savings rather than, you know, keep that in the general fund or keep that where it could be spent elsewhere. We applied it against the deficit, and I think that's certainly something that we felt the council gave us direction to do.
Great move.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you. The next item I have is a revaluation update. The town is required by state statute to perform a revaluation of all real estate property in town every five years. Approximately one year ago, the town council authorized Tyler Technologies to perform the revaluation. Tyler has completed their preliminary revaluation amounts, and notices have been sent to all property owners notifying them of same. I feel pretty confident town council members have received their notices as well. Based on their initial analysis, the overall grand list for residential property has increased by 15% over the last five years. Not all properties have gone up that same percentage amount. For example, residential properties have increased an average of 17%, while commercial properties have increased an average of only 3%. Other categories such as apartments with a 44% increase, industrial properties with a 20% increase, and I believe that 20% is mainly due to the increased value of Americhold on Northwest Drive, utilities with an increase of, an average increase of 6%, and vacant land with an average increase of 3% have appreciated at varying rates. It is too early in the process, and I'll say that again, it is too early in the process to predict the impact that these new amounts will have on next year's tax bills. For example, changes in the motor vehicle grand list and the personal property grand list, which have historically increased, will also play a factor in determining the potential tax increase. And these have not been finalized as of yet. It is anticipated that the grand list increase will result in a mill rate decrease when all is said and done. It should also be noted that motor vehicle taxes will go down because of the lower mill rate, which will help offset any potential increase in the real estate taxes. Residents who have questions regarding their new assessed value are encouraged to contact Tyler Technologies to make an appointment, and their phone number for that is, and it's on the notice as well, 860-793-0221, extension 7134. It's my understanding as of Friday, they had about 36 people who have, who have set up appointments, and I'm sure that number has risen as a result of more time going by. They will be happy to explain how they came up with the new assessed value and make any changes if necessary after meeting with residents. Anne Marie Herring is here this evening, our assessor. And Anne Marie, I don't know if you want to add anything to that? If you do, please come over to the microphone. And if council members have any questions for myself or Anne Marie regarding that, we certainly would be.
Am I going to go flying? Don't get it on film if I do, okay?
Take your time. Don't be in a hurry.
Hi. I really don't have a lot to add. Robert really did a great job covering where we are right now. As he said, it's a little bit too early to know that what the individual tax impact is going to be on residential properties, but they all did go up. I think we're all aware of that. It's been all over the news nationwide, the increase in values. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have, but really, I think he covered everything. So if you.
Anne Marie helped me with a question that came across my horizon, so I appreciate that. There has been, as we've all known, a lot of social media chatter out there, and I think it's important for people to understand that, you know, it is early in the process. There's a lot that's going to happen before people actually see where this is going to all fall out. So, but, you know, I'm, I'm happy that you're, you'll be available. Tyler Technologies is, should they be the first point of contact for folks, Robert, rather than the assessor, or does it make a difference here?
We would prefer to contact Tyler Technologies directly, but if, you know, they can feel free to contact the assessors.
Okay. Okay. Great.
Absolutely. I had someone today who wanted information to be sent over them and didn't have access to a scanner to send it over. Dropped it off this morning. We immediately scanned it and sent it over them. So any assistance we could be to anybody or any questions. I, I have field calls. The whole office has. But yet, we would really encourage anyone to please just call them and make an appointment. Give them an opportunity to hear you and how you feel, and give them an, you know, you could hear where they came up with these values from.
Okay. Great.
Some of, some of the things that I have heard is, is people concerned that, certainly concerned that the higher assessed values could mean that they're going to pay higher taxes. And again, it's too early to predict what that may or may not be. I, I believe that in looking at some of the numbers, people, some people are going to see a decreased tax, you know, taxes. So the other, the other is, is people feeling that the, that the assessed value as of October 1st, 2021, it might be the high point of real estate values. You know, that's, that's the peak, and that, and that there's some people who are speculating that, you know, it could drop fairly significantly over the next year. I mean, that's speculation and, and there's a logic to it, but I'm not sure that we really know where that's going to go, where that's not going to go. And as a result, if the next revaluation is in five years and, and the market drops fairly, you know, maybe back to what some people might consider normal in a relatively short period of time, that they will be penalized with the high values over, over the, you know, the following four years, for example. Of course, everybody's penalized, you know, maybe similarly, so, you know, maybe that makes not too much of a difference. But while the state requires revaluations to occur every five years, that's not to say that towns cannot choose to do a revaluation every year. Or, or perhaps if, if there was a significant drop in the values and the council felt that a year or two down the road, that it, it made sense for the council to, for the town to perform another revaluation, that could be done. It could be a statistical revaluation, which is, you know, a lot less expensive than the revaluation we went, we just went through. It certainly is complicated because the deck gets reshuffled again, but, you know, certainly that's an option if, 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 for example, real estate values, you know, drop down, you know, relatively quickly and on the residential side, and people feel that their values are, are not what they used to be in 2021. So there are options.
Okay. Well, it's good to know. I don't think, that's, that's general knowledge, but it's good that we at least know that as well, in case something does happen down the road.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you, Anne Marie.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Anne Marie tonight? Okay, great. Thanks for coming this evening.
Thank you. I'm going to scoot back down to my office.
Okay.
Thank you.
Answer those phones.
Okay.
All right. Next item I have is the Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant. Town staff recently submitted and intend to apply under the Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant Program. The grant is intended to assist in making infrastructure improvements as part of the White Oak redevelopment project. The final application must be submitted in mid-January. To make the final application, the town council must authorize the town manager to formally request the funding. And there is an action or an item with a new business that would authorize the town manager to request funding from the state of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development for the project. Next item I have is the Police Chief update. Police Chief Eric Peterson is here this evening to give an update on the latest happenings in the police department. With your permission, I'd like to ask Eric to step, step up to the microphone and give his latest report.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, council members, good evening. We recently gave a conditional offer of employment to another possible police officer, be another female, that would give us five current police officers of our police department, which diversifies our police department quite well. So hopefully everything goes smooth for her. She's going to be finishing up the remainder of the process. Robert and I are hoping we can have her appointed for the next council meeting. That'll put us at full staff and good time to implement some of those changes that I spoke to you guys a couple of weeks ago at the last meeting. If we want to look at tackling some of the overtime and put that into place as Robert leaves, I hope I get the opportunity to work with him on a couple of things that we can put into place. And it's a good time in our department as we're fully staffed. So I look forward to, to working with Robert in the, in the next two or three weeks on that. I'm continuing to evaluate our policies, procedures, general orders. There's quite a few general orders that I've updated that I've been sharing with you. And as we move forward to be accredited, there's quite a bit of work. There's quite more, a few more policies to go, so I have a good handle on that, where, you know, I prioritize some. And now where I am is I have to get back to update two, and there's, there's one more that I don't want to put in place by the end of the week. So our proactive patrols that we've been doing with the COVID grant that I've been talking to you about, it's coming to a close. We have to use the rest of the grant money by the end of the month, but let me tell you, these preact, those, these proactive patrols have been working great. We've actually interrupted some crime. We've actually interrupted some crime in progress, recovered two stolen cars. So it's worked out great, and we've strategized and saved a lot of the money where we can put these patrols out through the next few weeks, especially up into Commons when Christmas shopping and more people are going to be out. So, you know, through the hours of, you know, shopping time after work and through the weekend, we'll have a lot more patrols out there. So they've been working good, and it's, like I said, it's been a success. Not at lease seasons come to an end. I'm trying to get Dave Emery back into the police department. So the building's about 18 years old, a little over 18 years old. There's some painting we need done, some walls that need repair, and our squad room and our sergeant's office where we have the most traffic. We're going to replace some carpet and do some much-needed improvements. So I'm looking forward to get that done over the next, over the next month. And everything else is going good. Day-to-day operations have been going good, no major problems. Everything's going smooth, and morale continues to remain high. So that's all I have, if anyone has any questions.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Peterson at this point in time?
Thank you.
Thanks for the update.
I'd like to turn the microphone over to Matt Daskel. Matt, I assume you have a couple of happenings this evening?
I do, through you, Town Manager Lee and Council Chairperson. We've got a few events for this evening. I'll start with roadways, in keeping with tonight's earlier discussion. As we move towards winter operations, roadways is reminding folks to remove basketball hoops and other sporting equipment that they may have placed in the road or the roadside as we move towards snow plowing operations. So that's the first reminder for folks. The next comes from assessment and revenue collection. Sewer bill collection has concluded. Delinquent notices will be going out. Motor vehicle supplemental bills will go out in January 1 of 2022. Hard to believe that we're already at that point. And then the final is some senior center happenings, a few highlights. I'm told this is an annual, exciting one at the senior center. It's decorate the Christmas tree with sing-along carols. That'll actually be tomorrow, December 7th, at 1:00 p.m. To register, call the senior center, or you can go online to their Schedule Plus programming program. To get in the holiday spirit, they'll be decorating a Christmas tree in the senior center living room while singing holiday songs, pardon me. And the center's very own choral group will enjoy hot chocolate and cookies with everyone. Another one is going to be Crime Trends Holiday Edition. This is Sergeant Marquis returning again and offering an opportunity to discuss crime trends and personal safety. This is an ongoing series that's been offered throughout the community. It's now being offered at the senior center. We, as town staff, also had the opportunity to attend. It was actually quite interesting. So recommend folks consider that, Tuesday, December 14th at 10:00 a.m. Again, call or register online. And that number, I apologize for not mentioning earlier, is 860-747-5728, or you can go online to the Schedule Plus website. They also continue to maintain drop-in activities and others. We'll have those online, and that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Matt, for your report, and Robert for yours. Does anybody have any questions for either Robert or Matt with the information they provided tonight?
Matt, were you going to do the singing with the seniors tomorrow? Did I hear that?
I hadn't decided on that yet, but I guess tomorrow, folks, we'll have to attend to find out.
There you go.
He's going to sing.
He may be featured.
Awesome. Okay, thank you both for the information provided. We do appreciate it. We are now in our public comment section of the meeting. During this time, we welcome the public to step up to our microphone, which would be the one there in the walkway. Please state your name and address if you wish to speak, and you'll be given three minutes to speak to the council. Does anybody wish to speak to the council? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dana Snell, and I just wanted to come and speak as I know that we are looking to appoint our chief of police. And I wanted to come and share a little bit of what my experience has been with Chief Eric Peterson, and sort of my thoughts. I'm a Plainville resident. I've lived here all my life. I grew up here. I'm a third-generation citizen. I'm a taxpayer. I'm an African-American woman. I'm looking at how diverse we are in this room. And I just want to say that it is extremely, you know, police for a woman like me isn't always, always safe. We don't always feel like we are safe even when we call the police. And I have never felt more safe in this community than since I met Eric Peterson. He is hardworking, he is loyal, he is from this community, he is committed, he is educated. And these are the kind of things that we want. I mean, we put our responsibility and trust in you to be able to protect the interests of this community. And I want to be sure that my voice is heard and that you see me and that you recognize that. It isn't, it is, it's the subtleties that we need. The morale, I've talked to different police officers and the school system, the hard work. I just never felt any safer. And we want people that are invested in this community. Why would we ask someone to come from out of town to meet our interests? I'm not sure. But I just wanted to be sure that you understood that and that my voice was heard and that we have to look at merit and we have to look at people's experiences. And sometimes, you know, we don't all take tests, but we do demonstrate the best. He's taken on the responsibility of the prior chief, who was an amazing human, stepped right in his shoes. And I just wanted to come out and take the time. He helped my son, who's autistic, and went out of his way to make sure that a situation was in the best interest of him. And so I just want to thank you for listening to me and thank Eric Peterson.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak?
Hello, everyone. My name's Rachel Buchanan. I live at 134 Broad Street. I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Lee, for your service to our town. It's interesting because just chatting with people, the consensus seems to be words like fair, balanced. Just even how you respond on Plainville Talks, such an incredible forum that you bring back to reality sometimes with facts and information. And I just wanted to say thank you for your many years of service, and whoever's coming in next has big shoes to fill. You're welcome.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
My name is Gail Black, 4 C N C Avenue. And I'll follow up with my new friend, Rachel. I want to thank you, Mr. Lee. The council has big shoes to fill to find someone for your replacement. And, I mean, you've taught me like how serious things are when it comes to the government at this low level and how important it is to stand up. But you also have a sense of humor. I mean, how many town managers will, you know, not throw you out when you've? I had my eyes dilated during an eye exam, and I came in. I had those little funny glasses, and I just came in and plopped down on a chair across from your desk, and you didn't say anything. It just, not to, but you're, you take things that are serious, and you have a great sense of humor, but you're very serious about everything. And that's really appreciated. We feel we can talk to you about anything, no matter how serious it is or what. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Gail. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Last chance, anybody else wish to speak? All right, thank you for your comments. I will close the public comment section. We will move on to the next portion of our meeting. We, sorry, we do not have any old business to take care of. We have a couple of items under new business, and I need a motion, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to authorize the town manager to request funding from the state of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development to undertake the White Oak Redevelopment Project located at 1 and 63 West Main Street and to partner with Manafort Newport Realty and others on the development team for the proposed project and to execute any and all documents pertaining to the Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to reiterate my comments from a previous council meeting that I have concerns regarding the traffic, and I really look forward to any traffic studies and tests that they are going to do before I feel better about it. So I just wanted to go on record with that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, item number two.
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, other discussions of interest. Mr. Lee, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I have nothing else at this time. Thank you very much.
I would like to just mention as a reminder that this Friday, the Chamber of Commerce, along with our fire department and the police department, are going to be sponsoring a wave to Santa as a drive-through event at Norton Park. It begins at, it's this week, isn't it? Thanks, Matt. It begins at, I think people are expected to be there by 5:45. So if you are planning to attend, please come. You'll be requested to stay in your vehicle. There will be a drive-by parade with Santa and various other fun folks that are going to be there. So it's just a reminder that that is coming up. So if you haven't put it on your calendar, it is a fun event, so, just a reminder. All right, if we have no other items for discussion, may I have a motion to enter into executive session, please?
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't think we'll be coming back to take action, so that should be, that should be the end.